We'll move on now. We're going to have a couple, a series of public hearings coming up in a minute here. They're all related to the same activity, but one is related to a future land use plan, one is related to zoning changes, and then a plot. So you'll hear all that. But one major presentation, I'll go ahead and let the city make their presentation, and then we'll open it up for the public hearing, and you can have a chance to comment. And then we'll move on from that. So the next series that we're going to have here is all related to this particular item. Okay, Michael, you ready to go?
Engineer. We're going to identify the location of this property, Bird Street 1. This is a 29 and a half acre property on 1604 at Bird. And so 1604 is here, Kitty Hawk here, Bird Street is here. So we're talking about just south of Bird, which is in there. So that's really the property that we're talking about right now. Okay.
Tough to see.
Okay. All right. So as I mentioned, this is a 29 and a half acre vacant, so that track. The PUD development is being proposed. The applicant is Alamo Storage LLC. I just want to point out, this is the current overall site plan. There are five primary lots and a lot 901, which is open space. And the reason why that was carved out is that it's located in the A2 zone. So in order to work, the applicant is requesting a future land use plan amendment from HC Highway Commercial and GC General Commercial. It's a HC Highway Commercial and HDR High Density Residential. Zone change from C5 Highway Commercial and C4 General Commercial to PUD 2023-103 District. It's preliminary and final PUD approval, and preliminary plat and subdivision approval. The final plat will have to come back to high commission for final approval at a later date, once they work out all the issues with Tech Dot. And we need to say throughout the presentation. So Sam started working with the applicant back in June of 2021. So it's been a couple of years. They've gone through several iterations. They had worked through some issues. And so we originally talked about density, setbacks, access, offering adjacent neighbors, which isn't really a big issue in this location, architectural design and building materials. In November of 2022, they did come back to the city council, and they did a concept level presentation. They did receive positive feedback overall. Some specifics on the project, as I mentioned, there are five primary lots. Lot 1, which is at the corner of Fronting Road and Bird, is designated for commercial retail, more than likely it will be a drive-in type restaurant or a small home and tenant center. Lot 2 is identified for self-storage facility, max two acres. Lot 3 is just in the north, this is a larger, largest piece, that is approximately just 112 acres, and our common complex is being proposed, 291 units, 529 apartment spaces, which doesn't meet under the line zoning code, various amenities, a clubhouse, school, dog park. Considered building materials are a combination of stone and brick veneer, fiber cement panels, and architectural shingles. The highest points of these buildings are 55 feet, internal ladder and half connecting to a larger network. So one of the things that we talked about with them initially was the one we provided, what they would provide for internal, within the beauty itself, pedestrian connectivity, but also internal connectivity, because across the street, we'd like these folks to be able to easily access, get across Bird, and then per walk, ride their bikes to HEB to Walmart. So they have provided some internal access, though, while the residents there, too, they does, is you can use the larger path system. As I mentioned, lot 901 to the north is carved out, and that is good space, so it will not be developed there. Other general regulations, 85% maximum previous coverage for all property. The multifamily component for the PUD ordinance is required to have 30% common open space, and they are providing 70%, so they do have requirements. They're going to provide decorative fencing, frontage loop 1604 and Bird, so we want to make sure that there's nice looking fencing that is going to be from the public streets. Shield or power blade will be provided, and landscaping. There are various minimums that are required depending on the location and the type, the use type of the lot itself. Side inch, a multi-family component, regardless, will have two mounting signs, a 12-foot maximum measure from screen frame, and no pole signs for the apartment complex. The other lots will be allowed to have one pole sign each. Per mode standards, according to the PUD process, the applicant is required to address those standards. Those are included in the packet, and so they have to address those. We sent out 12 legal notices, and we did not receive any responses. And then traffic, I want to just briefly go over some of the traffic items. So the applicant did have a consult to perform a traffic impact analysis, and the TIA states that there's not expected to have a significant operational impact on the surrounding property system. AMP hours, one hour in the morning, one hour at night, most of the traffic, that will generate 276 AMP hour trips and 288 PMP hour trips, on a such an entire development, all the residences on all lots. In the morning to AM, I can be going down 116 trips, 28 entering, and 88 exiting. At the PM, 148 trips, 93 entering and 35 exiting. So what I want to do is, I just want to show the traffic paths. So two primary concerns, one is for trucks, and because these two lots, lots 4 and 5, are designated for warehousing, and so it's going to be a lot of truck traffic that's going to be going there. And so there's truck traffic, and then we're going to have the multifamily, which is going to generate a significant amount of residential traffic. So there are multiple ways to get to this site, to and from, but really, what we're really concerned about is the access to 1604 and Frontage Road as it's currently configured. Okay. So what we've done here is just create a quick little schematic diagram that identifies the different paths that people will take. So this is for the residential components. Scenario 1 is southbound via Kitty Hawk, UC Boulevard to burn. So these little red diamonds, you'll see, just follow the path made up by how folks coming southbound are going to get to the site. So going down Kitty Hawk Road, UC Boulevard, they'll take a right, and they'll take a right on Bird, and enter the apartment complex. The second option for folks going southbound, and I do not have the horns anymore, is just 1604, and then they loop around, they do the turnaround, get onto Frontage Road, and then they can take a right onto Vert Boulevard. The next item is people coming northbound, they're going to have to go over the overpass, and they're going to have to go up to Kitty Hawk Road, again, take a right on Kitty Hawk, UC Boulevard, and then take a right on Bird. And then the last option for folks that will likely live at Randolph, they'll probably go straight up Path Hooker, and they'll take a left on Bird, and this is the last item. This is a straight shot to the apartment complex. Okay? So that's where the apartments, for exiting in the morning, or in the evening, for leaving, more than likely, they're going to, they have multiple ways. They can go take a right on Bird, and go up UC Boulevard, or they can get onto Frontage Road and get to Kitty Hawk. The next item is for truck traffic, and so this is pretty significant. We would like to have a similar situation that we have with Walmart. We want to keep the semi trucks off of the interior of the city-owned roads as much as possible. So the designated route for the truck traffic getting to lots 4 and 5 and warehousing lots will follow this pathway. So southbound trucks will have to go down 1604, and they're going to have to use the turnaround, and they come right up to either of those two lots. Northbound traffic on 1604 will have to go over the overpass, and they're going to have to do a turnaround at Kitty Hawk, come back down, and do another loop to get there. And so let me pull up the recent progress. Well, let me. So currently, this is the configuration, the current configuration for 1604, Frontage Road. So right now, the way it's configured, the only access to Bird is from Frontage Road. So there's another access point. So this top line here is Frontage Road, and again, there's that loop from Frontage Road, you can take a safe right on Bird. The other exit, the off ramp, drops you off right at the intersection, and the double white line shows that you can't hit a right and enter there. So if you're using, if you're coming from a financial standpoint, if you exit, you have to go to Kitty Hawk, and navigate that. So that's the way it currently exists today. Tech Dot has plans to improve that entire area. This is Tech Dot's plan. We layered on the proposed development, PUD. This is a lot of information, it's really confusing. So what we did was, we stripped away all the irrelevant stuff, and we simplified it. And so when this happens, again, Frontage Road, you will have access to the multiple driveways, curb cuts, for those various lots. It will also have an exit that will punch them out just before or right after the lot 4 warehouse. So they'll have access to the retail as well as the self-storage. And so that's the design. And so that's why we put together that little presentation, to show you the different access routes for both residential and truck traffic. Also wanted to point out that we did have the retail coach, which is a marketing analysis firm, in fact, a market analysis for not only this property, this PUD, but also the properties across the street over there that own like the city and EDC. And in a nutshell, what that market analysis conveyed is that these two properties should be master of time, which is what PUD does. There should be mixed-use developments, those are the highest investment sources, and they should incorporate restaurants, more than likely fast casual, retail on the other city-owned, EDC-owned properties, multifamily, which is just a few D, has potentially a class A hotel, and office space and medical office. One of the things that they said, which was very interesting, is that post-COVID, as a result of COVID, they said that 50% of the folks who used to travel into work in San Antonio, no longer there, they're staying there on the summers. 50% that's a significant balance of devastating force in itself, that's what's all of that. All of those folks who are now closer to their homes in the summers, they need closer access to medical. So medical office is transitioning from city, we're entering city to civil type, so there isn't many medical office proposed for this site, but possibly for the other PUD. And so we have to have the answer to that.
Well, here's the process. We'll open up the public hearing in a minute related to this discussion. This is for you to address your concerns, or whatever you want to talk about. And after I close the public hearing, then it goes to council, so we have the opportunity then to ask questions and stuff. So that's the process. We've got three public hearings. Again, this is for the future land use plan change. For the record, I do need to read this, so bear with me. Request for amendment to the future land use plan on approximately 29.5 acre tract located at the southeast corner of East Loop 1604 North, access road and West Bird Boulevard. And I have a bunch of other numbers, don't worry about that. And it's from HC Highway Commercial and GC General Commercial, HC Highway Commercial and HDR High Density Residential, per zoning ordinance 581. So that's what this is. So I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing now at exactly 7:55. And anyone else like to address council, or anything on this? Yes, sir, Mr. Rivers?
Do you need to come up, or are you going to talk from here?
Well, please come on up, because we're recording everything. Yes.
Okay. Where people are going to be coming off the service road, where you can follow the law and stay within the lines before you can get into the right-hand lane of the service road and pass Bird, some people will have to understand their responsibility to follow the law, and they go short because it's truly convenient having to go all the way around when you're passing right out of the street. Now, we're going to add in retail, commercial, truck drivers, people going home, a lot of people in that area. I would like to see some serious consideration, putting up something obnoxious and for real to keep people exiting the freeway in the proper lane before you have a serious accident and somebody gets hurt, not after, because that's what's going to happen. Somebody's going to cut you short, and I want to take the two people not really paying attention, and somebody gets killed. That's all I'm saying.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. So I'll go ahead and close the public hearing now at 7:56. And, yes?
The applicant does have a presentation. The applicant does have a presentation.
Oh, I didn't realize that. Okay. Yeah, hi. All right. Let's go ahead and, I'll keep the public hearing, I'll temporarily close it, let the applicant make their comments, and then Benny, if you want to make some comments on that, you may. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, my name is Rob Killen, the land use attorney, the law firm Killen Griffin of Fairmont. address is 10101, reunion place in San Antonio. Appreciate the opportunity to come back before you. I've been in front of you, most of you before, but first, let me congratulate the newly-elected council members. I've served on a small city, local small city council as well, so I appreciate what it took to get here, and all of the work that you have going forward from tonight. So thank you for your service, and council members, and returning. Thank you for the opportunity to present again. You've seen this a couple of times over the last couple of years. Is this my proposal?
Yes.
It is. Great, thank you so much. So what we're asking for, just as a reminder, and I appreciate that you have a full meeting tonight, you have several public hearings, you'll appear for me once, we have rest of our team scattered around here, so the council members have questions, engineer, architect, developer, we can answer those questions that you might have. But we're just going to try and combine it to this one period, so you can get through everything, and we'll have to repeat ourselves.
Right.
We're requesting a planned unit development, which, as the council knows, is a zoning district. It is unlike other zoning districts, typically with a zoning district, I ask for commercial zoning, allows for a broad range of uses, and I can do this, 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 and this. Currently, we have C4 and C5 zoning, which allow for a broad range of uses on the property. But a planned unit development does, allows for mixed-use development, it also allows for a level of regulation of uses and building materials and layout that you wouldn't normally have in a base zoning district. So this is a great tool for cities to use, especially since the legislators stripped away a couple sessions ago, your ability to regulate building and tourists. We can do that through the planned unit development, because we're coming in, we're agreeing to what we can and can't do. It's a collaborative process, a great tool for planning as a land use district, it's one of those things we like to look to. And as I mentioned to the planning and zoning commission a couple of weeks ago, we do work in a lot of cities around here, and your PUD ordinance is certainly much more detailed, requires many more steps than any other city in the area. So there's a high-level scrutiny here in New York City, and we don't see other communities. So that's why it's taken a couple of years for we're here today, and again, there'll be multiple lights of the apple as we continue to go through the process, but this is kind of a big final step in terms of advanced planning. With all those preliminary comments, I'm going to go through this presentation. Mr. Kasad had an amazing job of going through this, and so I'm not going to repeat his efforts, but I've got some pretty pictures at least to show you, you know, the property is located. As I mentioned, we've got C4 and C5, which are intense commercial zoning districts on the property, we're requesting green zoning to planned unit development. You know, the property, as you saw in the presentation, showed how it lays out on the site. Six phases, commercial, self-storage, multifamily, two warehouse phases, and then the green space. You can see that dark blue, kind of purplish thing at the top, that's our green space. These colors are really not easy to identify. Reddish, orange in the middle, that's the multifamily, the light blue. Bottom is the mini stores, and yellow, lower left-hand corner is the retail, and then the green is the warehouse. I don't know why they didn't put green for the open space and blue for warehouse, but I wasn't in charge of the colors. This is how the site lays out. Mr. Kasad showed us on his presentation on located. Mr. Kasad also went through the number of units, aside, well less than 12 acres, two units, we're asking for, especially buildings, the block with setbacks, we comply with all of the setbacks, building height, density, about 27 units per acre, that's what we're working at. The warehouse is slowly around my tongue, cementitious siding, which architects understand, but it's our exterior-based requirement. This is the layout for the multifamily. This is really important, if you want to see what it's going to look like. These are, this is a, it's only three stories though, but it gives you a sense of materials that are going to be used and how they'll lay out. And this is what the council previously saw in our last time here, also, we showed to PNC two weeks ago. Commercial phase, to be determined, it's about one acre commercial. Self-storage, let me show you some pictures of what we're looking at. These are climate-controlled, fully enclosed self-stores, that's where the demand is, the old style, where you just have this large lot, these metal buildings, that doesn't fly much, that's not where the demand is, this is where the demand is particularly up in this market. Warehousing, again, we're going to have non-metal buildings, they'll have the Masonry designs on there, and the same. Phase 2, again, so open door, really just examples of what it could look like, give some sense. And then the green space, and then here's an example of the planning materials. So what we do is, and of course, in your backup materials, you've got this whole packet that describes in detail all of the design criteria that we have to comply with. Every time they come in in a whole apartment, about the length of the process they've got to go through, and it even goes down into the detail of what planning materials we're using. So that is a very brief overview of the project we've been working on for a long time, which you see multiple times, turn to Mr. Kasad, and the entire city staffs have the opportunity to fully review this. We wanted to take, again, this opportunity to answer any questions, we've got the full team here. And with that, I will close my comments.
Okay. What we'll do is, I'll go ahead and reopen the public hearing, someone would like to make a comment based on this presentation. Okay, let's go ahead and open up the public hearing again at 8:03.
Yes, ma'am. If anyone.
My name is Heather Sutcliffe, on Trudy Lane. My question is, I was here at the November 15 meeting, and one thing that was part of discussion was that the developer, Aspire, was receiving hedge funding, and I know there was a discussion that that was common, but I would like to know, are they still receiving hedge funding to build this project? If so, what are we going to get returned? Does that mean that a certain percentage of these units have to be low-income subsidized or Section 8? Or if not, does it mean that at a later date, they can be changed to low-income subsidized or Section 8?
Okay. Want Alan to answer?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, what we're asking for is a land use decision. We're asking for per job, we're getting to go into details of finance, we do have developer here for multifamily, but it is not a Section 8, because we don't build generally Section 8.
But you're receiving funds for that?
All of them, listen, address that. Say your name, and then speak that. But it is not a...
Jason Brown. Second, how you doing? It's a form of financing, it's a market rate financing, it has nothing to do with Section 8 or anyone that, it's just a financing mechanism tool that is done by the government.
And that is what they're not asking for, they're saying return money to see that.
Yeah. Anyone else? Okay, good. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 8:05, and we'll move then to the tab number D, which is the most obvious, this is councilway opportunity to action. So this is related to the future land use plan, and I don't need to read it all again, but this is the first reading related to the 29-point, excuse me, the acres, it's 29. So I'll open it up, or council now for discussion, Michael, or the developers, and we'll take it from there from Mr. Vaughn.
I guess, Mr. Kasad, since you're talking about the traffic study, do you have any type of timeline on that, on the 1604 Frontage Road going over the railroad tracks?
Tony. Yeah, well, Tony is their engineer, I would like him to speak to it, but we did talk to Tech Dot, they will issue, once they submit this project, it will be a TIA, formal TIA, to perform a traffic impact analysis, in which Tony can speak more.
Tony Almazar, representative VC engineer for the civil engineering project. We work with the attractive consulting, it was the PAC group. Tech Dot's, our plans are, it's been, the environmental portion has been approved, and they are in design, you probably won't go to the instruction until 2027 is coming, so it's not on the plan. So environmental portion's still on, and the design is ongoing, it hasn't been completed, they're top gear, they're screwed, but they're looking at late 27, early 28, do these improvements.
Is there any plan to change the 1976 turnaround on the 1604, or is that going to be the same way it is?
With those improvements, there is improvement for that turnaround, but it is all going in one package, it's not going to be phased. There's no plans for that to happen for any kind of improvements today, that it's in the future.
So the overall plan, I think what you're asking is, what are they going to do? Right now, you stop, right, you look both ways, then you go. So the discussion that we had with Tech Dot is that it's not going to work long-term, and that they actually need to configure that area so that if you are coming, you can't just do a turnaround like you would do at any other intersection that you were going through. I think they understood that, and that they're planning for that.
Okay. And then just a comment, I guess, I was originally supportive of this, because I, you want to put a lot of money in our community, and I really like that idea. I think I did before seeing the traffic study and seeing what 1604 is going to do, this is a bad corner accessibility-wise, so you're kind of making lemonade originally, but now that this is going to be opened up, I think it's more prime real estate, and I think it would be better to leave it as C4 and C5 zoning as it is now. I understand the property owners, their bread and butter is storage, and there is quite a bit, C4 is still there on that property that you could put storage on without changing the zoning. And I can't ignore the residents that I've heard around that don't think that apartments in Northlake are the best idea. So for those reasons, I'm going to be a no this evening. And there.
Okay.
Actually, that was my question, the Tech Dot timeline for the reconfiguration, so 27, 28, it seems, with the rest of the plan, seems kind of far out. I know Tech Dot doesn't do anything overnight, so.
True. Yes.
So my concern is your high-density residential. The proposed apartment complex looks more to me like a resort hotel than an apartment complex, like where everyone's kind of stacked on top of each other. I'd like to point out, just for like other council members, that if you're familiar with Aria Grove, it's right behind QT, the new QT that's on 1604, that is 308 units, and it sits on 20.9 acres. Even when I lived there, it felt like it was... Even when I lived there, it felt like it was really tight in comparison. In comparison, this is 291 units on only 11 acres. So that's even more high-density than a lot of other areas, a lot of other apartment complexes that we have here. My other concern is also about the residential side of this proposal. I just think it's strange, it's literally called Northlake Business Park. So my concern is that people are likely going to walk from this apartment complex to Walmart and to Kitty Hawk, past all of these businesses. So I feel like that's not really the right fit to have an apartment complex in this area, where, like we said, once this, this road gets done, it does feel like it's going to be very prime for commercial real estate as opposed to, as opposed to have an apartment complex there. And then, another question a resident asked me that I wanted to bring up and see if someone could answer. I don't drive this area, I'm not familiar with this area personally, but if I'm headed westbound on 1604 and I get off the new off-ramp, as soon as I cross the railroad tracks and then arrive where the off-ramp connects with the westbound access road, will I be able to turn left on that road? On that access road, and same thing, will the 18-wheelers be allowed to exit 1604 on that same ramp? Does that make sense? Should I reread that? Because I'm not 100% sure with that area. Okay, let me try that one more time. Okay. If I'm westbound on 1604 and I get off the new ramp, as soon as I cross the railroad tracks and then drive where the off-ramp connects with the westbound access road, will I be able to turn left on that?
Call it, Michael, call it.
I know, sorry.
No, let's put that, let's put that back up.
I don't drive it, so I'm not 100% sure, but it was a question someone asked, and I didn't quite have, I didn't have an answer for it. So I was wondering if we could possibly get them an answer to that question.
Okay, so, the northbound or northbound?
Okay. So I was, when I was asked the question, it was westbound, but apparently, we got to So I guess, where are the railroad tracks? Maybe that would help.
Are there railroad tracks over here?
Yep.
So, that's why, are they coming this way or are they coming that way?
It's a really great question, and someone else asked it, so I'm not...
Towards 35.
Okay. So, yeah, just, sure, headed towards 35, if that works.
That would be, north.
Okay.
That would become west eventually.
Okay, and so they...
Cross the railroad tracks.
Okay.
On the freeway still. Are they able to turn, so maybe it wouldn't be left, maybe it'd be right, is what they're asking. So they're backwards.
They have to be right. No, they'll have to go to Kitty Hawk.
They'll have to go to Kitty Hawk. They won't be able to get off and turn there. Okay. Okay.
When the new, when the reconstruction happens, they will...
Okay, so that's, I guess, what we're trying to get to. So when the new construction happens, they'll be able then to turn left there. Same with the 18-wheelers? Turn right, I'm sorry, turn right, sorry. I'm going to get there.
So the 18-wheelers will not go to Kitty Hawk, they're, because there's only two entrances or three proposed curb cuts, they're going to have to, they're not going to get all the way up to Bird.
Okay.
They're going to have to do the loop, or they're going to have to just, they'll exit. So there's really only a limited number of ways that the trucks can get to these sites.
Okay.
For the residents coming northbound, yeah, they're going to, currently, they're going to have to go Kitty Hawk, or, but once the reconstruction happens, they'll be able to exit the freeway and take a right after.
Which I think was, okay, so that was what they were trying to get to, is that then that makes that highly sought-after for commercial, because it makes it easier to get in there to go shopping, to do whatever you need to do. Okay. Okay.
I can address that. That's, that's an interior lot, that is not, that does not have frontage of 1604.
Okay.
So keep that in mind as well.
Okay. I'm good.
Mr. Kuzma.
Thank you. So, when you just said that it was an interior lot, you're talking about the warehouses?
No.
Or all of it?
So if we look at, so here's 16, the frontage road, Bird, so the multifamily is primarily over here. The reconfiguration exposed at this point, but the majority of this lot is interior, so it's not fronting 1604. So retailers look at that, that's not going to, it's not as prime as this quarter lot. And in addition to that, retailer will tell you that you need rooftops in order to get the retail, this provides a lot of...
So she asked, basically, this is a headlong, are these, are these, are any of these apartments subsidized, or is it all market rate?
Market rate.
Okay. We've talked in the past, I'm not a fan of the storage, but if we do nice storage like you're proposing, and this is where I would really stress that it is one of the nicer models, I can, I can get past my anti-storage feelings and support that, but I, as a guy that works in that neighborhood, I am a little concerned with the amount of traffic coming down Kitty Hawk, but it also, I mean, more, more rooftops is, is good for more retail, so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I just want to ask for clarification. The long-term plan with 1604 is to have it, have a frontage road that crosses the tracks, so there will be a lower park that actually crosses the tracks, which now we have none.
This is the long-term plan, so.
When I looked at, I was, I had a hard time deciding if it was just highway or it was going to be frontage.
So the, the corridor will obviously continue in multiple lanes going over the tracks, but you will not be able to cross at the lower level and a frontage road over here next to the base and cross the tracks.
That's what I was asking. Because that's what then makes it really desirable commercial property, is if you get that access, that I think as long as you have to continue to exit over the tracks, so confusing to, if you have to stay on the highway above the tracks and then exit, then that near corner to the tracks continues to be problematic to get to.
Right, and so, to illustrate your point, is, this, again, this is the proposed plan, Tech Stat, we stripped it down. So this is causing over to the freeway, and this is the exit. You have to be in the right-hand set of lanes on 1604 to exit, and the closest lot, or the first lot you'll be able to get to, is the questionable, is you might be able to get to Lot 4. And so that's why, it's questionable, right? And they have to work that out with Tech Stat to see where those curb cuts are going to be. But that basically, if you can't access Lot 4, you definitely cannot access and will not be able to access Lot 5 over the freeway. So there's no retail that's going to go there at all. Lot 4 is going to be questionable. So these, these lots, the self-storage and the component of retail that's being proposed, that's viable when it's reconstructed.
Yes, correct.
I have a question. So, okay, so then you're saying that it's possible, though, to get to 3, which would be the apartment complex?
There's no exit, there's no curb cut, and so likely, Tech Stat, they're only going to allow a certain number of curb cuts off of the frontage road.
So you're saying a business couldn't get in there, though?
Right here?
Yeah, like what if that wasn't an apartment complex? What if that was a building? Could you do, if it was retail?
They have to get the curb cut from Tech Stat approved, and they have to get it approved.
Okay.
I want to be cautioning you about talking about Tech Stat timeline, I think your offer's broadened up. So 23 years ago, they told us they were going to make the improvements to 1604 that they just finished. And for 23 years, they said they were going to do it. Part of this project, especially the tracks that Mr. Patrick bought, was in that original plan, but it was so complicated and so expensive, they dropped it to get the plan done that we just did. So I, I think he said it, but perhaps maybe it doesn't sink in, that they may have the environmental done, they may be thinking about it in 27, 28, but the big thing that he said is they haven't funded it, which means that they're probably looking at some federal highway dollars or something that that's, that's very competitive, also with some of the debt ceiling things that we have coming up, if you're paying attention to that. We know that one of the ways that the politics is working out on that is they want to reduce the amount of money for railroad tracks, we're talking about a railroad track, they want to reduce the amount of money for bridge, we've got multiple bridges here, they want to reduce the amount of money that they're going to have for GGBG5, and they want to reduce the amount of money that they're going to have for highways for however long time this planning works out. So I wouldn't get too hooked into, I mean, 27 or 28, because it's a mystery. I don't know, Tony's still here, where do you go? Would you say, I know you've been around, if it's not funded, it's, yeah, don't hold your breath. Just don't hold your breath.
Yeah, we'll get you a person.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, along, Mayor Porten, Goldsby up, I'm going to have our time with that, for just a short period of time, but I'm so glad you are. First of all, did you know what cementitious was?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, just, just. We have said before, we've had this conversation where Mr. Goldsby was not a real fan of the storage at the time, putting it up, and I will reiterate my thought, especially when we're talking about Lot 5, because of the type of access that's not granted on that, and I never saw it as commercially viable. With the plans that they showed, and like I say, I'm, I'm a proponent of the storage facility in that area, of the type of storage facilities that they were offering, which is the, the three-story and the, the air-conditioned or climate-controlled, which is something very well needed in this community, especially as it's growing, the only storage offered is right off the Meadowland, it's a public storage area, there is no, there is no temperature control over there. I think that, this, that area there and the type of facility they're talking about putting there is something the community needs and will help, will serve in the, in the future. But, yeah, and, and back to Tech Dot, that was my point being there, and the 27, 28 sounds like a long ways off, and it is, but you could just basically throw that out without any funding to it. You know, hope and pray. Thank you, that's all.
I was going to say, I do want to say that I share Mr. Edwards' concern about the traffic in that area, both in coming off 1604 currently, because we're going to have to deal with that for many years, and that is, I know I've seen people take that right turn, and it is dangerous, but I would say I even drove the Loop Gibbsboro and kind of did the turnaround, and also came down from Aviation and did the turnaround, did the curb up that way to go onto 1604. Without the curb cuts in the driveways now, we would have been hard-pressed to take a right on into any driveway that had been cut out. I understand, though, with the cutouts, people will go slower because they will see the potential that people could be coming in and out of traffic. But I do think that we will have to be aggressive with potentially signage or something for caution, because that whole stretch will be problematic and definitely a risk to the drivers in the area.
Tony, I hate to call on you again, but can you give us some kind of imitation of what signage or something that Tech Stat would be requiring on that frontage road regarding 27?
At this point, we haven't, we haven't got any driveways approved, and we're, you know, we're still on the put, put stage, we haven't done the traffic analysis, but we haven't actually got to, you know, permitting driveways, so we haven't had any of those conversations as far as what kind of signage to remediators or what they might require we're talking at that stage yet.
But in explanation, other times, do they, most of the developers have signage installed with remediators?
They must certainly will, you know. One thing that they have already told us is with the warehousing, because of the truck traffic, there will be deceleration rings for those two lots to pull those trucks off the, off the front road and the deceleration rings so they can turn. Same way for, they anticipate one, there will be self-storage and retail as well. So we know there's going to be some deceleration rings to help that traffic flow, to get those cars off the main line, off the front road, into the safe lane and make those turns. So we know for sure there will be three, minimum three deceleration lines planned, coming controlled once we start to do permitting processes and testing.
Okay. Here's the next. Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How long has this property been for sale?
We, we've owned the property for, I'm sorry, Michael Meyer, landowner, we've owned the property for a couple of years, two, three years, and we've had it with, you know, input from, from the city marketed kind of in this fashion for a couple of years, and so, and you've seen several iterations of this project over that timeframe, where we've had lots change, you know, dealing with the, you know, tracks, housing isn't feasible in closer proximity to the tracks, so where it makes sense for the, for the, for the housing location, the warehousing is a little more suitable for that area. Let's not forget that it's bisected by a transmission pipeline that further complicates development, so the separator from lots 1 and 5 is another piece, but it's been a couple of years on the market. We've had very little interest in the commercial aspect, which is viable here for the, for the land use, for the zoning change and the land use plan. Let's highlight, just, and to look at that, immediate access is problematic for lots 3, 4, and 5, because of where the Bird Boulevard, the current exit, just short of Bird Boulevard drops off. In fact, you can't really even make it to Lot 1 or 2 under the current configuration. If we get the new plan as Tech Dot has passed through environmental, if and when it gets funded and finally built, the proposed configuration will still be problematic at Bird for that exit, but the exit further out by the base that then takes you on the newly constructed bridge over the railroad tracks will provide access to lots 1 and 2, not 3, 4, and 5. It's still going to be that, that U-turn around to come off that ramp, it's not going to be, it's not going to be access off the, you know, off that frontage road to, to get to 4 and 5, so, from a long-term, so for, in terms of interest in the current zoning, minimal, that's...
Right. With that new proposed Tech Dot construction of 1604, whenever it might happen, I'd like to hear your opinion whether you think that would make the property more attractive to commercial? Because if, if you can't turn off of 1604 into any of those properties, especially where 3, 4, and 5 are, does that make it any more or less attractive from a commercial perspective?
Your retail customers driving by on 3, 4, and 5. 1 and 2 is where you might see them. The, as we've kind of had some discussions outside of formal meetings, that the better retail land is north of Bird Boulevard, and the kind of undeveloped Northlake area, as you get closer to, as you get closer to HEB and Kitty Hawk, that's better retail land from the access, when you look at the, when you look at the configuration.
The one that's beyond Bird towards Kitty Hawk?
Yeah, 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 beyond, yeah, beyond Bird towards Kitty Hawk is, is the better retail land. So long-term, if this were still being marketed four or five years from now, you know, it's just, hypothetically, let's assume, you know, there's bridges, you know, bridges, railroads, all that stuff, magically, years, five years from now, the Northlake land will still be far more valuable than lots 3, 4, and 5 from a commercial standpoint. It just, it doesn't have that access that the, the traffic further down has.
Yeah, even with that new bridge, in order for the trucks to access 3, 4, and 5, they're still gonna have to go around, if they're coming from 10 towards 35, they're still gonna have to go to Kitty Hawk, make that turnaround, come back down and make the turnaround at Gibbsboro in order to get on there, is that correct, in order to access lots 3, 4, and 5?
The trucks to the warehouses on lots 4 and 5 will not be accessing from the newly built, proposed Tech Dot highway, it will still be from the turnaround to get to that. So if you look real close on the Tech Dot plan, you'll see, and actually, if you drive it, if you drive the land, you'll see they have the, Tony helping with the concrete median? Concrete median, or, yeah, the concrete median is there for where the proposed overpass will drop traffic onto the front of the road, so the proposed concrete median lives somewhere around kind of that split between, I was lot 2 and 3, if I'm looking at that, or might be in the middle of, might be in the middle of kind of lot 3, where the proposed median is, or the edge of, the edge of 4, but there's no, there's no decel room from the new median where the road comes over to reach lots 4 and 5. So it's still, the lot 4 and 5, I guess the short version is, lot 4 and 5 access does not change with the new roadway, it's still the current animation that was presented.
Very good, thank you, sir, I appreciate that explanation. I have made that deceleration off of 1604 to make the turn onto East Bird, it was on a Sunday afternoon with very light traffic, and there was nobody behind me, and I was very careful in making my deceleration. It was specifically after you came and presented the first time, because I asked that question about access off of 1604, and would people be able to make that right turn? Mr. Edwards, I absolutely agree with you, sir, when that starts construction and people are starting to move into there, there'll be way too much traffic trying to come off of 1604 to make that possible. So notwithstanding the fact that the Tech Dot change for the new over, the new exit and the ramp is essentially a hopeful at this point, right? We hope it's gonna happen, but it's not until 2028. I think that construction, you know, if you had to give it a good timeline, when do you think, if all the stars align and Mr. Casado approves your building permits and stuff like that in a timely fashion, when do you think you might be able to start construction? Any estimates, even a guesstimate? And then with the first tenants, where, you know, whichever, whichever one gets built first, maybe 2025, late 25, 26, something like that? So that's, that's pretty soon in terms of construction for the city. I'm not inclined to ask you to wait until 2028 to try to get that lot sold, because it becomes even a little bit more eligible for that commercial, or more attractive for that commercial. So I see your point, Phil, and I absolutely agree, I think that if we could get retail in there, that would be an ideal situation for us, would be to have the retail in there, but I just don't see that it's feasible, and especially since it's your property, I'm interested in kind of trying to bend to your desires if we, if we can accommodate, and it's in the best interest of the city. So I support your proposal for the zoning change and the PUD changes and everything like that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So one thing I remember we talked about was between lot 4, 3, and 4, the overlook from my three-story apartment complex is gonna look out over that warehouse unit, and we had talked about, you know, having landscaping or something like that. In there, in the, in the definitions up here, you talk about, we will have an adequate landscape buffer, but when I look at the drawings, that little bit is not, is not dimensioned, but I'm gonna estimate that at about five foot. I wouldn't mind if we, if we added a little bit more of a landscape buffer between, on the industrial, on the warehouse side to that. I know that we have from the building line of the apartment to their fence, there's like 20 something feet, but then from the property line, you only have like a five-foot buffer, I really wouldn't mind a better buffer.
We can see it on the side screen, we can't see it on the back screen.
There is a detailed requirement for landscaping on all the lots, and the landscape is going to be provided, and so moving through this, we do have the right to audit, to increase or have that increase of buffers. Their proposing fences in between the residential and lot 4, and that's in addition to landscaping. Plus, there's a distance as well that we have the, and that this is being included as an entire development, so it's know what's going in the back door.
So you're saying, so I guess part of my question is, is this is being approved like tonight, right? This is our, we're approving this PUD, without any, if we approve this tonight, I'm gonna get that five-foot most strip?
The five-foot?
That we're calling the landscape buffer.
So?
On lot 4.
I have to look at the, what's on the screen to see if that matches, see if the actual review match, is this text, is the guidance?
It doesn't give me a dimension, it just says inadequate.
Okay, and so?
I don't feel five foot is adequate, I would like to see it more. I'm ready, I'm personally, I'm excited about this now, I've gotten past my anti-storage feelings, and I'm ready to do this, and this is where I'm, I'm looking at our property owner, and I'm like, hey, I'm on your team now, I just want a little bit more landscape buffer for my, for my, for my apartment dwellers, but I'm on your team, but can we play together? And that's, that's where I'm at on this one, so.
Mr. Goldsby, I'd like, you have to kind of look at both the lot 3 and lot 4 together. So lot 3 has landscaping, and when you get to lot 4, if you read the very small, oh boy, it's all, it's a lot 3 multifamily tree and shrub string, and then it shows a string on the lot 2 or 3.
Okay, but I'm just saying, the imagery, the pictures, again, I love my crayons, so I'll look at the pictures.
You're talking about the plan?
About the plan, I'm looking at the plan, at the plan itself, and, and I see a nice sidewalk going through on the, on the apartment side, and it meanders up, you know, it meanders between the apartment fence and the apartments, and I'm assuming we're gonna have some nice trees in there, but typically, the onus is on the warehouse side to provide that buffer, it's not on the residential side to provide the buffer, but the commercial side. So that's, that's all I'm at, I was, I'm trying to make sure is that we have plenty of landscape buffer between the industrial and the residential. I got a head nod, I want to make sure we got.
Yes, thank you, yes, it's, you know, it looks like five feet on the plane, it'll be more than, I was talking, it's gonna be on the industrial side, and so it'll be much larger than five feet.
No, that doesn't mean I want you to take away from my beautiful meandering sidewalk.
That's right. We have plans, we have a sidewalk, we're gonna have insurance of the actual limits, you can't do anything in five feet if you notice, so it's gonna be going in five feet.
Okay, all right, that makes me happy, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, before us is the, this particular portion is related to amending the future land use plan, so that what I would not need is a motion to amend the land use plan?
Confirm the land use plan as detailed, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Buck, there might be a question, further discussion, anyone? And I don't have to reread the whole thing, because I already read it, right? 29.2 acres. I'm looking at our attorney, I think, I think we're okay.
You said move to a future land use plan?
A future land, a future land use plan, right.
Move to approve the future land use plan as detailed in the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
And I will second that. All right, further discussion? Yes, Mr. Goldsby?
Does that include the discussions that we had about extra trees, or extra landscape? That's, that's our discussion. You got that, Michael?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Again, again, by the way, this is our first reading, so there can be some changes, clearly, definitely, if something comes up between any of the council members that they want to work with, with Ms. Turner and Michael on staff before the second reading, which will be that, will be planned for our first meeting in June. Okay, another discussion, I'll call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Buck?
Aye.
Councilmember Nigerys?
Aye.
Mayor Porton Goldsby?
Aye.
Councilmember Bowman?
Nay.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
And Councilmember Bond?
No.
Okay, that is 4 to 2, future land use plan. So the next item is a public hearing, basically the same thing, this is, this is requesting for a zone change, so this is part of the process, future land use plan, zone change, and that, that's the way it is, so I'll open up the public hearing again for this, same, same exact item, 29.2 acres, and if anybody would like to make a comment on the public hearing at 8:40, I'll open up that hearing, anyone would like to make a comment based on that, this, again, this is just a procedural way that we do this, it has to be looked at with three different public hearings. Okay, I'll close that public hearing then at 8:41. That moves us on to tab number 8, which is another public hearing, yeah, I'm right, I'm making sure we're doing this in the right order, right? Another public hearing, which would approve the, the plan, used development plan, so then, this is another one, again, exactly the same thing, so I'll open up again the public hearing at 8:42, any comments, anyone? All right, and I'll close it again, by the way, at 8:43, and we'll move into tab number E, which is, which is, this will be an ordinance that amends that zoning map of the city for those approximately 29.5 acre property, okay? And it'll remove the said property from C5 Highway Commercial and General Commercial to PUD 2023 103 District, zoning for commercial services and retail multifamily residential, convenience, storage, and warehousing, and adopting the PUD final plan. Again, this is our first reading, so if there's gonna be any changes, that we certainly can make those, that we have something, that we want to make sure that is clarified, we can still do that as well, so. Again, this is, I'll take a motion, then we'll open up.
Move to approve.
Okay, motion to Councilmember Nigerys, and then to Mr. Goldsby, discussion, further? Council? All right, let's call for the motion then, please.
Councilmember Nigerys?
Aye.
Mayor Porton Goldsby?
Aye.
Councilmember Buck?
Aye.
Councilmember Bowman?
Nay.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Bond?
No.
Okay, the motion, that's 4 to 2, that, let's move on now then to tab number F, it's a concept plan presentation on apartment complex and self-storage unit on 2280 Pat Hooker Road.
Okay. This is the three motions.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was, that was tab E, we just voted on tab E.
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, the ordinance is, so two ordinance, and one is the, usually in turn in the second ordinance, as the zoning as well as the PUD.
That's right, okay, okay. I think that's, that's, that was, the motion was made, right, Paul, related to the PUD and the zoning?
Yes, you would put, I believe you put tab 7 and tab 8, the same ones, that's what he's referring to.
Did your motion to approve the PUD, the zone change?
The zone change and, and the PUD, and the PUD, yeah, the zone change and the PUD. Yeah, that was the, that was my impression, yes, okay. And, Mayor, Councilors, thank you again so much for your time, it's, uh, everyone here tonight, we just appreciate your time, and again, we'll, we'll be back, and continue to work on it, and all the issues of, of course, it's not my fault, sorry, so thank you guys for your time and seeing you all. Okay, thank you guys.
Thank you guys for waiting.
Okay, as I say, the next item is tab, is tab F, because we took care of the PUD and, and the zone, and that's the conceptual plan presentation on apartment complex and self-storage at 2280 Pat Hooker Road. Michael?
the applicant here who'd like to make a presentation, but I'm gonna practice this with a couple of slides to talk about traffic on Pat Hooker Road. So just to introduce this project, I've had it before you several times, this is the facility, I believe they were here back in November, so this is 2280 Pat Hooker Road, this is right behind Copperwell, it's the vacant property, and there's a 12-acre track approximately, they're proposing 192 apartment units, just under nine acres, and then the portion that has been in the ACU zone 2, they are proposing four three-story self-storage buildings. Again, that, that, the reason why that came into play is because that can be used, so this is a less intense use and, or not available to the Air Force. And so before that, I'd like to just touch on the traffic analysis that the city had done for Pat Hooker Road overall, and so HEB, our consultants, conducted a traffic analysis, and what they came up with, the study was conducted, and the traffic counts were conducted in 2022, the final version came out a few months ago, and so on Pat Hooker Road, total number of trips, or the total volume, it's also called A D T, every annual daily traffic, so the total volume of Pat Hooker Road is 26,390 trips, both ways, all combined, every which way, and that's from 1604 down to 78. The study estimates that the volume will increase to 41,600 trips in 2045, so in 23 years, 22 years, and I'll get to the last bullet. So what the study found is that the intersections of and down Pat Hooker Road, all the intersections, they all, the majority are LOS A or B, LOS is lateral service, so when you, that's measured by basically the time that you're sitting at a red light waiting to get through that light, okay, that's the lateral service, and so they rate that, A, B, C, D, and F, they're heavy, so it's A, B, C, D, F, and so LOS D, and an intersection is considered feasible, okay? Majority of our intersections are LOS A or B, which is very functional, it's excellent. There's one intersection that is LOS D, and that is at 78, so the south side of Pat Hooker Road. So the average annual growth rate, they projected to be about 2.4%, or 627 trips added per year up and down Pat Hooker Road. Then we talk about distribution, so the big question that comes up is, well, which way are the cars traveling, and what's the volume difference, right? Are the majority of people going north in the morning, or, you know, south in the morning? Well, it actually comes out to, it's about 45 and 55 split, and the majority of the people, 5% travel towards 1604, okay, both AM and PM hours, peak hours, so we found that very interesting. So now I want to plug into this overall formula, the two apartment complexes, one that was approved back in November, December, for 2902 Pat Hooker Road, which is also called PJ, that PUD, the apartment complex was approved, and then this project, so factoring these into the overall equation, they will both combine, add a total at full buildout, 3,100 trips, and that's about 12%, okay, so 3,100 trips, now, that's not gonna all happen at once, they're not gonna build all the buildings at the same time. UJ, UJ, that PUD, the apartment complex, was approved. And then this project, so factoring these into the overall equation, they will both combine, add a total at full buildout, 3,100 trips, and that's about 12%, okay? So, 3,100 trips. Now, that's not going to all happen at once, they're not going to build all the buildings at the same time, get their CEO, have people move in the same thing. So, this will be spread out probably over three to five years, if they were to start construction, you know, market dictates, so it may or may not, but of all things, if we're going well in the market, then three to five years will build up, would be ideal. So, that 3,100 trips being added to the overall Pat Hooker system will take place over time, okay? So, I want to emphasize that point. So, that's about a 3% increase per year, if it was built up for four years. So, getting back to this point here, so what these studies showed us is that, in order to maintain an LOS D in all the intersections, we couldn't have more than 40,800. So, we're a little short, I guess that's a improvement still to make. So, one of the big issues that we all have experienced is trying to go northbound on Pat Hooker Road at the corner, to get to 1604, it's backed up, surprisingly, it still meets its, I believe it's an LOS B, Level Service, because, again, it measures the amount of time, the number of seconds that you're waiting to get through those lights. And so, yes, it's different, you're not just flying through there all the time if you're in the right hand lane, but it's not that much of a delay, okay? However, we understand that we'd like to have it approved, so this progress, Randy, is working with tech staff to try and get the right turn, which will free up, if that does happen, then, you know, we would not have, we do not anticipate having significant delays, if all was built out for the next four years. So, with that said, this is just a breakdown, dissected the analysis to identify within, at the different intersections, what the actual outside, and so this breaks it down to peak hours, AM and PM, it shows you the direction and the number of vehicles traveling through that intersection at those times. So, with that said, I will end with you, Eric, and again, the developer does have his presentation.
Let's let the developer make his presentation. This is a concept plan, which means we are allowed to give our feedback to the potential developer as to, you know, what we see in terms of this particular project, that's why it's called a concept plan. Come on, sir. Want to introduce your team? Go ahead.
Thank you for your time, my name's David Strauss, partner with CLX Ventures. This is Thomas Hill, working for Land, here out in San Antonio. He lives in San Antonio. Tell me your addresses, we can give you those.
It's good.
We appreciate your time, we already appreciate the city staff, who's been immensely helpful in helping us understand y'all's desires from a procedural standpoint, and we hope to move through that quickly. With that, I'm just going to let Thomas make the presentation, I'm going to take notes. I would like to think that y'all would feel free to stop us at any point and say what about. Traffic certainly is important, and to touch on that. I think the thing about this site that is the most important, beyond where the buildings are and all that stuff, are the oak trees. And that's the reason we, that's why we named it, you know, the Grand Act of Grove, because the trees are magnificent. Shame on us if we lose one more than we have to, but we'll do everything we can to keep all of those trees.
Okay, and yes, if council wants to make some comments during the presentation, they certainly will.
Yeah.
Mayor, maybe for Miss Bowman and Miss Fitzpatrick, so at this concept level, they're just getting what they're intending to do, and from all of the council members, they're expecting questions and some kind of feedback, because without that feedback, they don't know which direction to go. So, obviously, they spent money, did some due diligence, but before they go into heavy expenditure of dollars on this project, they want to kind of get a feel of what the council is looking for, and then from that point on, they'll make a determination of whether they can grow more of the project or not.
Good evening, everyone, thanks for letting us come before you today. Let's go forward with our presentation for the Granite Grove.
I heard it's only about two hours, so.
Here's the location of the site in question, very close where we are today, located on Pat Hooker Road, 2280, in between the Mahama Bux and Napa Auto Parts and Pepper Mill Apartments. It's just about 11.9 acres. And so, we similarly are looking to get a planned unit development, rezone for the site, to be able to build Class A market grade apartments. Here's a picture of our, one of our recently completed projects, the Granite Stone Creek up in San Marcos. We understand that Ms. Turner and Mr. Casada may have seen it previously, completely complete it, how it is in person. And here's an example photo of how the self-storage project might look. Self-storage is very similar to one of CLX's other main food groups that we developed, industrial warehousing, just at a smaller scale. And we plan to do climate control, good quality, with really nice materials, you know, concrete, and good secured access, fencing and gates that'll allow this project to not only be secure, but also look good when it's constructed, but also for many years to come. The first question you might have is, is there a market for these two kinds of projects? And we focus on multifamily first, by our calculations, there's a net demand of 871 units in this area of San Antonio. And where we're at, the 260 units, as Mr. Casada mentioned, that Whitecomb is developing right now, so those units in addition to our proposed 192 units, would still leave over 400 units net demand for this area. Here's our current site plan, if I work this right.
If it's okay, Mr. Mayor, since you offered, have you considered the apartments that have recently been approved by Universal City, as well as the apartments that are going in along 1604, across from the, what's the mall over there, the North Star Mall? There's a lot of multifamily units going in over there. Stoner, Rolling Oaks, sorry, North Star is down on 14th, sorry, the Rolling Oaks Mall. Did you take that into consideration as well when you were doing your demand studies?
Yes, we would get that, that's a little bit different market. I mean, it's real close, looks like it's real close, but it's a, it's a different sub-market. We've, Whitecomb is doing the other project that's right down the street from this, I've been partners with them and great developers, and y'all will enjoy their product. We actually have launched with them to make sure that we weren't butting heads as far as product and sizes of units. So, between the two projects, it'll give the residents, or the potential residents, a better selection of sizes of units, like, so that the amenities are very similar.
Thank you. Thanks for the question. So, here's our current site plan we're working with, as you can see, we've overlaid our tree survey and topography survey, and as David mentioned, and I'm sure it's, y'all have noticed, right above Pat Hooker, there's many wonderful trees on this site, so we're going to engage part of the trees that we've worked with in the past, to not only save as many trees as we can during construction, but preserve as many of those trees for many years to come, because we really need to be a centerpiece of the site, and that'll make it look very mature and beautiful, and best that possible. Here's some photos of some of our past projects, this one built up in Fort Worth called Granite on Beach, one of my favorites. Here's some pictures from our most recently completed project, Granite Manor, and photos of the club room, which will look very similar to the club we're proposing here. Some pictures of the club pool, major difference between this one and Granite Manor, and here will be, the pool will be wrapped by units, instead there'll be a detached clubhouse that will be located in front of the pool. These are pictures of our model unit, we're very proud of the project we built, we always consider them something that we would be very happy to live in ourselves, and some things that we put in, like granite countertops and stainless steel appliances, just really do give that extra feel of quality to the units. Here's our fitness center, which we outfit with some really nice fitness equipment, they're very popular in our projects, and they really do get used a lot. Shifting over self-storage, here's a report for the storage market in San Antonio, the biggest thing to point out would be the positive rent trend, indicating that not only is there high demand for self-storage within San Antonio, but in fact, there's increasing demand, and so we think this would be very well received here. Here's our current site plan for self-storage, subject to change, most definitely, especially the point of access on Pat Hooker Road, we're going to talk to the tech staff right now, whether they would allow a curb cut so close to the secondary access for the apartment project, that may have to be a shared access point, or we may have to ask for access from Pepper Mill, we're in discussions with them as well too, because of that road and that property.
I got the newsflash, about an hour before the meeting, I got the answer from Pepper Mill, they're not real thrilled about giving us access off of their existing roadway, which certainly disappoints us. And so, to the point of access, that corner of both of these projects may change to where there's a shared entrance, so that there's not two entrances, there's actually one. But, that's about a two hour ago comment, so it kind of took me off my feet when they refused to take money for us, for just the curb cut off of their road, but that's all right, we'll get back.
Right, so we're exploring other options here. Here's another picture of how the self-storage project might look, just with the materials and the secured access that we mentioned before.
Yeah, but we speak to this because it's pretty, I think this is pretty bland looking, but this is just a concept, all these buildings are going to be air-conditioned, if this is, well, they're all going to be air-conditioned no matter what it looks like. But this one, the concept is everybody could drive up to their unit, rather than having to go up in an elevator. Just, so it's a concept.
And as for the impact to the city, we've received all our will serve letters indicating there's currently ample water and sewer capacity. We're having storm granted, being designed by our civil engineer and hydrologist, which will assure proper storm drainage. We're going to put a deceleration lane for the entrance to the apartment project on Pat Hooker Road, in addition to a bus turnaround, which will allow for traffic to move on the, Kate Dawson, the civil engineer who performed our traffic impact analysis, has indicated that the self-storage project would have de minimis impact to traffic on Pat Hooker Road. And here's an excerpt from our traffic impact analysis that Kate has performed for us, and specifically also to, we asked about the ability for semi-trucks to be able to drive into a self-storage site, and Kate commented, although that is a rare occurrence, that we're definitely going to take that, and we consider it, along with our civil engineer and architect, to make sure that that would be an opportunity available for anyone with a semi-truck, as well as. And additionally, speaking to the intersection of Pat Hooker and 1604 Frontage Road, we explicitly asked our civil engineer Kate Dawson that question, whether there would be significant impact there, and she believes because that is nearly a mile away, that there will be negligible, if any, impact in traffic to that intersection. Here are our quick lay schedules we're working with right now, we plan to have our PUD application completed in the next week or two, and then, if possible, we hope to have approval within the next 45 days following our submission. And as far as development goes, we plan to close on the land in December of this year, and then begin construction at the latest May of next year, hopefully earlier, and then begin delivering units in April 2025, and then finally deliver our last units in October 2025. A little bit more about us, another picture of Granite on Beach here, we're very active in the I-35 corridor, in the industrial and multifamily. One project that's under construction, close proximity years, an apartment project in Granite Sibolo, which is under construction now, and very well, and excited to be in this area of town, we really love this area of town, and also very excited to be investing in Universal City. And here's some more pictures of our two main types of projects that we develop, on the left large warehouse, that's located in DFW area, and then on the right, again, Granite Stone Creek, located in San Marcos. The principles that CLX have been developing together for 14 years, and in that time, we've delivered over 2.3, 2, 2,300 units of multifamily, and over 9 million square feet of industrial space, and we've capitalized over $1.2 billion for these projects. And so, like I said, we're very excited to be investing in the future of Universal City. Here's the contact info of all the members of CLX, feel free to contact any of them at any time, David and I will be spearheading this project, hopefully, and so feel free to pick up the phone, call us, or send us an email at any time with any questions or concerns.
Okay, you want to add something?
Yeah, if I could, y'all have seen this, other iterations of this, the ancient that was presented in November, we have downsized the project from the unit count to 190, which for us is a small project, but it will lessen the traffic is one reason, another reason is that it will give one-third, or whatever, one-third, one million is, not really, 64 units will be accessible units, which is, there'll be some retired Air Force folks, or retired people, or just anybody that needed access. And so, trying to think, I had another half stop there, it slipped away, but I'm okay. We talked about CLX being in the business 14 years, this is my 54th year in the multifamily business, and I've had the wonderful opportunity to develop all over the country, including in San Antonio, other places, it's been an exciting business to be in. And one last comment, y'all got the best love of any city in the United States. Are there any questions?
I'm pretty proud of our relationship with Granite. Yes, open this feedback time for us now, give you our impressions of what you just presented, so, can you start out with him, ma'am?
All right, so the feedback I've heard from residents, there's a couple of things. So, several residents have mentioned that they're not necessarily for another multifamily complex, especially since this is 190 units, I'm almost wondering if a couple of residents were kind of spot on, like I said, I don't do this for a living, and I'm not telling you how to do your job, I'm just relaying what the residents told me, so that you understand where the residents are coming from. So, they, they're, they would be more excited and more amenable if it was something that was seniors only, like a retirement living complex, that would be easier for people to approve, even if it was, especially being what our town is, if it was retired military seniors, if that was sort of a priority as opposed to another multifamily unit, especially because we already have a complex going in at Junkie Joe's, so if it's not something different, it doesn't feel like it's something the residents want unless it's geared towards seniors only, retirement living. The other concern that really isn't for you guys, but it is the residents' concern, is safety. It feels like the police department already has, doesn't have enough police patrolling, and apartment complexes are known to have higher police call volume than single-family homes, and that doesn't mean that there are more crime, and it just means that more calls typically get sent over to apartment complexes than single-family homes, so that is a concern of the residents, that's probably the two feedback things I have directly from the residents.
Yeah, well, take this for us, follow my text, we don't discriminate against both of us, I stress that when I look at myself in the mirror, so, we, you know, we have not, in my past, I've done senior housing, we have not fallen out of that, we'll take a look at that. As far as numbers of emergency calls, certainly if it was senior, it would increase calls by the MTS. And anytime you put a lot of people in a small place, there are more. We haven't had, in the project, we feel, we really haven't had an issue, it's a concern, but it hasn't been an issue, so, but it's, we'll take it, it's a bit.
Oh, I meant, that's it, sorry, those are just their two concerns, that's it.
So you've mentioned we are going to have a, a bus stop.
Yes. They don't have a bus turnaround.
Turnaround on, onsite, right? And then we are looking at a deceleration lane?
Yes.
Okay. Then you just said you're looking at having 64 accessible units? And I know this is preliminary, but I'm just going to go ahead and tell you now, you've got a whole lot of carports, but not one of them has an ADA symbol in there. If you offer the carports, you know you've got to have at least a certain percentage.
And the other thing, Scott, on that site plan is garages. We all have some garages and there'll be any also.
I truly appreciate the, something that Ms. Bowman brought up earlier was, was just the density and this, you have, you, this, this is not like packed in and you've allowed that green space because of the trees. So I truly appreciate that on Pet Booker, because every time I looked at that, everything I came up with, I was tearing down all the trees. So I'm really excited that you're keeping some of those trees. I do not like that image of the, the concept image of the storage units, the brown one. The other one had more merit to it. It had lower, had lower spring lines that fantastic because that year, right next to residential, you know, single-family residential. I understand you may want some type of height for the office. I get that, but you know, I thought Michael said there was three-story units going in here and I was freaking out. And so, because that's not what I saw, I think he, I misheard. So, and, and they, these units will be kind of secluded for the most part, these storage units. So I'm not looking for them to be a marvel of architecture. I'm just, that's totally ugly.
No, it'll be ugly.
And then, oh, Pepper Mill. Yeah, I don't blame them for telling me no because that's the access for the units where I'm talking about having larger, heavier trucks going on. Did you offer to like, hey, this will do a concrete apron and all that, a concrete drive?
I offered to buy the road from them and then let them use the road.
Okay, never mind.
And they tell us, why would you do that? We need, we need extra floor access. And then, and then the road replacement's on us.
Yeah.
There's still thinking about that piece.
Okay.
I think they're probably having a drink over that.
Well, thank y'all very much.
Good.
Thank y'all very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I think you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, I too was a little concerned about the, the storage until you were explaining, you know, the senior level there. And I like, from the last plan that was presented, I liked the fact that even though there was more units, you were still taking great care of the way it was designed to keep those trees. And by doing lesser units here, that's, then there's even less damage to trees. You did answer one of my questions, because last time we were talking about garages, I didn't see you in here, you just answered that those will still be, also, we had a lot of discussion, and I remember the different, we were trying to figure out the difference between the, it's the holding pond and a drainage pond. I think we were talking with holding. Was there any changes to the dimensions in that or is that?
No, the pond, the pond doesn't change sizes. However, our civil engineers not through with this downstream analysis.
Okay.
And so that may change, so it might take away some more of the self-storage. It won't change the apartment layout too much, if any, but that, that configuration may change slightly.
So, and, and to my point there, I think you just answered that for me. You say if there is any change, it might take away from the storage. So in other words, there's, we're not talking about any plans to make it smaller, but if anything, it would be larger.
Yeah. It may be deep in some, but, but no, I don't see it. Yeah, it's not going to be smaller because we're covering a lot of the land we've, etc. So we'll need, we'll need every bit of that storm storage.
And that's exactly what I want to hear. Yeah, I, I do like the way you, you've laid this out and getting to his point, too, is like, didn't like the plan, didn't like the looks of that first plan. As far as, as looks and aesthetics, yeah, it's, it's the storage. But again, we always said, I like to say, this is UC and, you know, we don't, we don't go for junk, junky. So I like the fact that you answered. As far as aesthetics wise, you're going to be paying attention to that as well.
Shame on us because the trees, we've got to, we've got to build a project that lives up to what those trees say.
Thank you very much. That's all I have. Thank you.
I guess a point to feedback, so I'd like to give you some feedback. I like what you've done. I don't have any problem with it. And you said trees, magic word, that's what I want to hear. I just, just to be honest with you, I think it would be hard to, for me to see he's saying yes on this down the road if he's on it, just because I feel like we're on kind of apartment overload. And I know we say we want rooftops for retail, but it seems like our retail's doing well and the retail that we have at HEB in particular is pretty slammed. So that's just my, my opinion. That's my view.
In our, in our actual presentation, in the, the PUD, we'll, I'm not going to say we'll ever talk you out of, into that PUD, but we'll, we'll provide some data that hopefully will give you comfort that there are more people looking for apartments than there are apartments, even after Whitecomb, like after us, even after the project, these gentlemen back there talking. So, I mean, it's, in the, the, the apartment industry is a lot different than it used to be. And, you know, it, it's, it's a lifestyle choice. And, and with that comes demands on us developers that build projects to provide a finished product. I mean, there is no comparison from 15 years ago or certainly 40 years ago. You know, I look back at some of the projects that I was involved in early in my career and they were nice at the time. But today, people really demand stainless steel, granite countertops, the under, undermount seats and all of that. Jacuzzi tubs and same, I get it. And hopefully we'll provide some information for you that makes you feel better about it anyway. But if you go against it, I respect that too.
That's why you got that kind of feedback.
Maybe other.
Yes.
I appreciate the quality of your product. The finishes looked nice. The commitment that you're doing to having those high-end finishes, I think, is important. I hate to give up more retail property on Pet Booker. I would love to see more retail come in, but we look down the street and we see lots of empty spaces that are currently there. And so I recognize that that's not, people aren't willing to develop the property in that way because it's not renting in our area. So I do appreciate the product that you're putting forward in front of us. I appreciate the thought about the trees. I think that's great. For me, the storage was, I wasn't thrilled to see more storage even away from Pet Booker a little bit, but I do appreciate the difference in the fact that it would be climate-controlled. I think that's important, that it have that differentiator, because I don't think we need other regular storage units on that, on that street available.
Okay. You have more feedback for them? Does it give you some proof for thought? Pressing on?
Just one more comment. I think your, your comment about the retail buildings there, like I mentioned, one of these, I hope and I think that when Whitecomb's project gets there and our project gets there, it gives those, it gives a rejuvenation for the retail that's there. And I think there'll be a good part of that because new development, well done, usually telegraphs into the neighborhood of buildings and businesses. Hopefully that'll be good here.
Okay. So your next, your next step then is to get prepped up and then present to P and Z, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Hope that feedback was good for you.
Thank you for waiting. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Tab G, consider bid acceptance for the Red Horse Park package to parking lot improvements.
Can you take a five-minute break? Do you want to get through this?
Kim? Let's, let's see. Yeah, we got three items before we go into closed session, so let's take a quick five-minute break. No, that's fine. I think it's a good one.